Gavin's got coffee on this.
Oh, okay. I thought you were solo, man.
No.
Sorry.
I need some water.
You've got one minute. Hurry, hurry.
What you're so good at? Oh, so I'm gonna campaign too. I wanna do the development condition too. I'm gonna go to the movies. Or Jake. Who's calling now? Oh, no. It's Dr. Wagner. Wagner, I'm talking.
Dr. Wagner? John, ready?
So you're gonna be going in Notre Dame Lynn?
Yes.
Cause you think you won't be your dad going to?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know where you're going?
Well, we're going Dallas first.
Okay, so when is that?
That's on the 29th.
Okay.
But then during our organization meeting would be the...
Yeah, that's all right. You guys ready?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with thing. We're in there, bud. Don't tell him us, don't.
Give me five more.
I just wanna, I just really wanna come here and just be, you know, counseling.
John, ready?
But don't start talking. Are these, uh... You telling them that?
This is just my gift.
This is what, uh...
Yeah.
Okay.
You are...
Touching my stuff.
Ready?
I'm ready.
We should organize it. I think he went back up there.
Okay, just call his name to see if he's here.
You guys ready?
Ready.
Ready? That's fine. Good evening, Monday, December 10th, 2018. Common Council meeting is now in session. Um, our invocation by Reverend Thomas M. Thews. Do not believe he's here. Uh, we'll go to our bullpen. Vice President Oliver Davis, would you do our invocation?
Let us pray. Good Lord, we thank you so much for this season of the year. We thank you for this council, for our mayor. Continue to give us wisdom as we lead the city of South Bend. Thank you for all of our residents who have come. Continue to guide them and bless our city as a whole as we continue to grow. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you all would stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and...
You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Silence. Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston, here. Councilmember McBride, present. Councilmember Broden, here. Councilmember Teskett, here. Vice President Davis, present. Councilmember Fordy, here. Councilmember Furley, here. Councilmember White, present. President Scott, non present.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee minutes, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the November 26th, 2018 meeting of the council in confidence being correct, therefore recommend this may be approved.
Most of you accept. Second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Special business, I'll turn to Ms. Fowler, 1872, please.
1872, a resolution congratulating the South Bend Eastside U-12 baseball and softball 12-year-olds for making it to the 2018 World Series, placing fourth in the Babe Ruth World Series.
Thank you, as a presenter.
Yes, thank you. Gavin Furley, 1109 Dewey Avenue. Uh, this is a resolution congratulating, oh, sorry, actually, the frame already read that. Um, so I'll start with the whereas. Whereas, the South Bend Eastside U-12 All-Star team's record the entire All-Star season was 16-4. And, whereas, and I want you to pay attention, these are some phenomenal numbers here. Eastside dominated in state competition, playing six games and outscoring their opponents 74-1. Eastside lights-out pitching was led by Savannah Hamilton, who pitched against 24 batters, throwing 102 pitches, 75 of which were strikes. Other pitchers, Candace Brummett, Jessica Cleveland, Taylor Kincaid, and Ally Miltonberger, combined to face 46 batters, throwing a total of 152 pitches, 82 of which were strikes. And, wow.
Councilmember Joe Broden, whereas, Eastside earned second place in the regional tournament and was invited to play at Babe Ruth World Series in Treasure Coast, Florida. To participate in the World Series, Eastside had 20 days to raise funds to help cover travel expenses. With the help and support from their parents and 16 sponsorships from the South Bend community, the team was able to successfully raise $7,000. And whereas, Eastside beat both the regional champions, Jefferson Town, and the 2017-2018 World Series champion Patterson in the first two games, first two games of World Series Tournament. Eastside had only one tournament loss going into the semifinal of the World Series and would end up claiming fourth place in the Babe Ruth World Series. The members of the Eastside softball team include, and if I might, um, at this time ask the players, as their names are called, to come forward and, um, uh, just join us here. So, uh, I'll start first with, uh, Dan, the manager, Dan Camacho. Dan, could we come forward, please? His coaches, um, Mike Hamilton, Amy Petrie, and Mike Rush. Good, everyone? Thank you. And now for the players. Salino Botello, Katyns Brummett, Gianna Camacho, Jessica Cleveland, and I don't think I saw her, Ray Le Dodd, Savannah Hamilton, Jaden Handley, Haley Holgard, Taylor Kincaid. You know your order, look at this. But it's certainly not your batting order, I can tell. Ashlyn Crone Witter, Ally Miltonberger, Mike Rush, Danny Rush, and Rosie Thornberry. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the common council as follows. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of the city of South Bend, Indiana, and as elected members of the South Bend Common Council, we are pleased to publicly recognize and congratulate the South Bend Eastside 12-U softball team's achievements. Congratulations to the South Bend Eastside 12-U softball team. We wish you more success in the coming years. Signed this 10th day of December in the year 2018, in the city of South Bend, the county of St. Joseph, in the state of Indiana. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from accurate adoption by the South Bend Common Council and approved by the mayor. So I kindly invite if anyone from the team would like to speak or address the resolution...
Coaches and players.
Captain or...
Thank you very much. This is very much appreciated. These, we couldn't have done it without the girls. I mean, they're the ones that actually played the game. We just told them what to do. Did they listen? No. They're 12-year-old girls, so what do you expect? Uh, we, uh, the team was, it was an incredible run. Uh, we had four girls from the team last year that went to the World Series as well. And so we, we made it again this year. Our goal was to, obviously, win the whole thing. And, uh, we, we ran into a sunbathing block. It was hot, 104, 105 degrees, 120 degrees on-field temperature. It ran out of steam. But, uh, I couldn't be any prouder. It was, it was...
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Oh, yeah. Dan Camacho, 53200 Ironwood Road.
Thank you. Any player wanna step up and say something? You're all shy. No, she isn't. Go ahead.
No, no, we started here. Yeah, go for it. All right, all right, all right.
Okay, um, Gianna Camacho, uh, 53200 Ironwood Road. Um, yeah.
Totally connected that.
So I'm one of the four players that, uh, this is my second time going to the World Series. Um, in 2017, when we went to the World Series, we placed fourth place, too. And we lost to the World Series champions by only four runs. So, I mean, it was a good run, too, that year. And we also went undefeated and won the championship in state that year. So two years in a row, state undefeated.
All right, all right.
Well, I think I might love this team more than 2017. Um, and I'm friends with all of them. They're family to me.
That's awesome.
Um, is there any questions?
Blackest now. You should never ask that. No, we're asking. We will. We'll ask.
Comments?
Okay.
So, any questions or comments from council? We'll start with the second district.
Comments? Absolutely. Congratulations, the World Series! It's like phenomenal! And we look forward to you guys seeing the 20, what would it be, 2019 team? Anybody coming back for that? Some? A few? Okay, well, for those of you who are moving on, way to go. Congratulations, you leave quite a legacy. And those of you who will be back next year, we look forward to seeing you here again, maybe with the championship.
Mr. Grant?
Congratulations to the coaches and to the young ladies. Wonderful job. I'm a huge sports fan and coach, so this is always exciting. So thank you for bringing the resolution, council people. It is indeed an honor to, uh, see such young ladies play with heart and, uh, team effort and do it so gracefully and with a lot of fight. So congratulations to you all.
Mr. Teskett?
Yeah, just congratulations to, uh, you ladies and, and coaches. Seems like we were just here honoring the boys, right? I don't know. I'm gonna check the water in the east side here. Congratulations and way to represent, uh, our city well.
Vice President Davis? Congratulations on all that you do. A special congratulations to all the parents out there and all the sponsors that raised $7,000, especially at the last minute, put it all together like that. Um, that shows that you all, all you team members have parents who love you, and you have, uh, people who love you, and you rise upon their shoulders for greatness. And that's really important, cause not everybody has that. But you are born rich and you have that kind of concept. But it's not just money, it's the investment and the wisdom and the encouragement. I can see it through you, you know? You can see that you're dead, you can see that kind of thing. When you have parents behind you, it really just gives you more strength than anybody else can say. And so it's great and treasure what you have, cause not everybody has it. So it's congratulations.
Mr. Fordy? Uh, that's a wonderful thing. This area has a, a long history of producing champions, and, uh, you've certainly added to that legacy, and, uh, that's something really to be proud of, to see your efforts and your dedication rewarded. Uh, so congratulations.
Ms. White?
I would like to add my word, um, of congratulations, as well as to thank each and every one of you, uh, for your commitment to the sport, for most importantly, your commitment to do the work. The discipline, the dedication, and working together has given you the results that you have now. I can see that there is a level of collaboration, a level of friendship that is among each and every one of you. So I would challenge you to cherish that and to maintain that as you continue to move forward in your career, but most importantly, through your educational journey as well. You've made us proud, and we're very, very pleased to be able to be part of giving this resolution to each and every one of you.
So with this resolution, uh, it goes in the history books. This will forever be part of the South Bend government history, back from 1865 till today. Uh, you are all, and your names are in that record book. I want you guys to do, and one of all this council dues, give a hand to your parents for, uh, putting up with you guys. So, yes, sir?
One last thing.
Come on up to the...
Make sure it says on the record, uh, Patterson, Louisiana, was 17-1 overall through the tournament. Their one loss was to us.
So one thing that I love seeing in, in doing these resolutions is, you know, so many people say, "You gotta be in a warm weather to, uh, play baseball or softball." No, that's not true. It's the hard work that you guys do, and I know it's getting cold out there, and you guys are gonna be indoors, uh, practicing, so keep up the good work. We are so proud of all you ladies. Uh, thank you so much. So, um, yes, yes, we'll, um, part of the formality is to turn it over to the public. For those willing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Anyone? Go ahead. You wanna come up? Go ahead.
Come on up.
Yeah.
You can come up there.
All right.
All right.
Say your name and address.
Say your name and address. A little square thing's a microphone.
That's cool.
Um, I'm Taylor Kincaid, 2937 Norfolk Court, Misswaka, Indiana. Um, I was, um, I'm number seven. Um, I played first baseman, pitcher. That's my mom.
All right.
Um, thank you, all of you. All.
You're so welcome. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. Now, we gotta do this as a formality. Anyone wishing to speak against, because we're a democracy, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council. What is your opinion? Second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Come up here. Shake all our hands.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks very much.
I've got a cold. There you go. Hey, congratulations to you. Thank you. Hey, hey. Congratulations. Congratulations. Hey, there you go. See you next year.
Woo! One more.
There it is. All right.
Step on through.
Yeah, they're all on.
Hey, that's, I don't wanna do things for a while.
You just gotta out there.
Nope, let's do it. I'm photobombing.
Photobombing. Sweet talk, guys.
That's the position. You have a Camacho work. Thank you all. What's up?
Acknowledge that.
Okay, we'll proceed with, uh, special business. Uh, resolution 1875, Ms. Fowler.
1875, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, thanking Dr. Darrell M. Heller for his contributions to the city of South Bend community. Thank you, as a presenter, presenters.
Uh, presenters, uh, Regina Williams-Preston, representing, uh, District 2, and...
Oliver James Davis Jr., District 6, 1801 Naff Street.
Thank you.
I didn't get my address, did I? 838 North Elmer Street. And it is with great pleasure and with great sadness that I bring this resolution to you today, um, in honor of a man that stands before you as, um, really a beacon, um, and an example for, uh, citizens all throughout our community. So, um, we'll get to the resolution and, uh, have an opportunity to say a little bit more at here.
No problem. Bill number 1875, resolution number 4681-18, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, thanking Dr. Darrell M. Heller for his contributions to the South Bend community. Whereas, Dr. Darrell Heller was born in Athens, South Carolina, the grandson of sharecroppers, and a son in a military family. He went to 12 different schools between first and 12th grades, and his love for education led him to become the first-generation college student at the College of Charleston, where he received a BA in philosophy. And whereas, Darrell developed a deeply-held commitment to social justice when his last year of college. He worked on a life-changing project focused on migrant farmers, workers, where he witnessed the oppressive conditions under which they toy. He, and he spent the next several years working in a nonprofit, community-based setting, dealing with the homeless, hunger, and HIV/AIDS. And whereas organizing at the grassroots level, Darrell taught and supervised work readiness programs, developed trainings to confront the digital divide in inner cities, directed community development projects. He consolidated the Amistad Institute and nonprofit with the Mission to Design, developed and implemented replicable programs for the inner-city communities. And whereas, his work in the trenches with marginalized communities awakened a longstanding interest in the United States history, especially as relates to labor, the African-American experience, and mechanisms in which race is constructed and deployed in the interest of the dominant society and culture. And Darrell's personal mission led him to attain a master's degree in American State for Columbia University, and his PhD in history from the University of Chicago. And whereas, Dr. Heller found his way to South Bend in 2015, where he became the director of student and community engagement and the director of Civil Rights Heritage Center at the Indiana University of South Bend. This off-campus location was designed to build collaborative relationships among students, faculty, and the broader community relating to the issues of civil rights and social justice. And whereas, the Civil Rights Heritage Center operates out of the former Edmond Public Network and a once-segregated city-owned and operated swimming pool, is now hosts public lectures, programming, and exhibitions on topics such as related to civil rights and social justice.
And?
Whereas, under Dr. Heller's leadership, the Civil Rights Heritage Center has set three consecutive records for the first, second, and third best attendance, and renewed its reputation as a place for community exploration into the history of marginalization and oppression, its current impacts, and its contemporary manifestations. And whereas, the center came alive with work that stirs the soul to action. Guest speakers, film screenings, poetry jams, and historical lectures brought together an intergenerational community of activists, students, teachers, professors. People of faith, peace, labor, and law gathered to act on their commitment to justice. Dr. Heller personally played crucial roles in advancing the work of many social justice organizations, including Michiana Social Justice Coalition and Community Action for Education, and even served on the board for Imani Unidad and the Community Forum for Economic Justice. And whereas, a unique mix of academic and activists, Dr. Heller navigated political and social communities with ease, creating an ever-expanding circle of influence. His opinion articles, lectures, and keynote speakers called out the dynamics of institutional oppression, spoke truth to power, and challenged community leaders to make real change. And whereas, in recent years, Governing Magazine rated South Bend as a high-performing, race-conscious city, there is no doubt that in his short time here, Darrell's work has made a significant contribution to the momentum moving us forward towards our goal of racial and economic justice. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council publicly offers its gratitude to Dr. Heller for his role in making South Bend a more informed and better community which recognizes its past and looks forward to its future. Section two, the common council wishes Dr. Heller continued success as an educator and organizer for social justice in his new position. And section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor. Thank you, Dr. Heller.
Thank you.
When you look at that, um, a lot of times people come to a community and may just work. But he came to this community and really became a part of it and has made it better. It's hard to think you've only been here for such a short time because you've done so much. You've done a lot. And, um, I want to make sure that you always keep this city on your heart, cause you would be on our thoughts and minds as we move forward, because we are better because of you. And I'm gonna thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree. Um, Mr. Heller, a few words that you'd like to say?
Yes, um, first of all, thank you, um, for this. It's, it's been my, my honor and my privilege to serve as the director of the IU South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center. Um, and this was more than I ever expected, because in one sense, I just felt like I was doing what everyone should do, you know, that the real task that we all bear is to make the world better than when we came into it. Um, and I certainly didn't do it alone. Uh, I came ready for work, but there was already a community care that was working. And my commitment for the Civil Rights Heritage Center was simply what I think the, the whole mission for South Bend and South Bend is, is to be a national model, um, of how we can get along and how we can work through hard issues, and how we can have difficult conversations and build together. Um, because either we all build it together or we all fall apart alone. Um, and that's my deepest belief. So, I'm just honored, thank you, um, and I will continue to do what I do and just with the challenge for all of us to keep working together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, doctor. This time I, uh, I'd like council to comment. I'll start with Ms. White.
Okay. What can I say? Uh, I'm saddened, but I'm also happy for you. Uh, you have brought a level of, uh, bringing the community together where the center is viewed as a place to have those difficult conversations, uh, where...
See you next year.
Yeah, that's easy. I don't want to do things for a lot of...
You're just talking out there.
Nope, let's do it. I'm photo bombing.
Photo bombing. Sweet talk guys.
That's the position. We have a Camacho at work. Okay. We'll proceed with special business. Resolution 1875, Ms. Fowler.
1875, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana thanking Dr. Darrell M. Heller for his contributions to the city of South Bend community.
Thank you, their presenter, presenters.
Presenters, Regina Williams Preston, representing District 2, and...
Oliver James Davis Jr., District 6, 1801 Nast Street.
Thank you.
I didn't get my address, is it 838 North Elmer Street? And it is with great pleasure and with great sadness that I bring this resolution to you today in honor of a man that stands before you as really a beacon and an example for citizens all throughout our communities. So we'll get to the resolution and have an opportunity to say a little bit more.
No problem. Bill number 1875, resolution number 4681-18, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana thanking Dr. Darrell M. Heller for his contributions to the South Bend community. Whereas Dr. Darrell Heller was born in Athens, South Carolina, the grandson of sharecroppers, and a son in a military family. He went to 12 different schools between first and 12th grades, and his love for education led him to become the first generation college student at the College of Charleston where he received a BA in Philosophy. And whereas Darrell developed a deeply held commitment to social justice when his last year of college, he worked on a life-changing project focused on migrant farmers, workers, where he witnessed the oppressive conditions under which they toyed. And he spent the next several years working in a nonprofit, community-based setting dealing with the homeless, hunger, and HIV/AIDS. And whereas organizing at the grassroots level, Darrell taught and supervised work readiness programs, developed trainings to confront the digital divide in inner cities, directed community development projects, he consolidated the Amistad Institute and nonprofit with the Mission to Design, developed and implemented replicable programs for the inner-city communities. And whereas his work in the trenches with marginalized communities awakened a longstanding interest in the United States history, especially as relates to labor, the African-American experience, and mechanisms in which race is constructed and deployed in the interest of the dominant society and culture. And Darrell's personal mission led him to attain a master's degree in American State for Columbia University and his PhD in History from the University of Chicago. And whereas Dr. Heller found his way to South Bend in 2015, where he became the Director of Studying and Community Engagement and the Director of Civil Rights Heritage Center at the Indiana University of South Bend. This off-campus location was designed to build collaborative relationships among students, faculty, and the broader community relating to the issues of civil rights and social justice. And whereas the Civil Rights Heritage Center operates out of the former Edmond Public Network and a once segregated city-owned and operated swimming pool, does now host public lectures, programming, and exhibitions on topics such as related to civil rights and social justice. And?
Whereas, under Dr. Heller's leadership, the Civil Rights Heritage Center has set three consecutive records for the first, second, and third best attendance, and renewed its reputation as a place for community exploration into the history of marginalization and oppression, its current impacts, and its contemporary manifestations. And whereas, the center came alive with work that stirs the soul to action. Guest speakers, film screenings, poetry jams, and historical lectures brought together an intergenerational community of activists, students, teachers, professors. People of faith, peace, labor, and law gathered to act on their commitment to justice. Dr. Heller personally played crucial roles in advancing the work of many social justice organizations, including Michiana Social Justice Coalition and Community Action for Education, and even served on the board for Imani Unidad and the Community Forum for Economic Justice. And whereas, a unique mix of academic and activist, Dr. Heller navigated political and social communities with ease, creating an ever-expanding circle of influence. His opinion articles, lectures, and keynote speakers called out the dynamics of institutional oppression, spoke truth to power, and challenged community leaders to make real change. And whereas, in recent years, Governing Magazine rated South Bend as a high-performing, race-conscious city, there is no doubt that in his short time here, Darrell's work has made a significant contribution to the momentum moving us forward towards our goal of racial and economic justice. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana as follows. Section 1. The South Bend Common Council publicly offers its gratitude to Dr. Heller for his role in making South Bend a more informed and better community which recognizes its past and looks forward to its future. Section 2. The Common Council wishes Dr. Heller continued success as an educator and organizer for social justice in his new position. And section 3. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor. Thank you, Dr. Heller.
Thank you.
When you look at that, a lot of times people come to a community and may just work. But he came to this community and really became a part of it and has made it better. It's hard to think you've only been here for such a short time because you've done so much. You've done a lot. And I want to make sure that you always keep this city on your heart because you will be on our top mind as we move forward because we are better because of you. And I want to thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Heller, a few words that you'd like to say?
Yes, first of all, thank you for this. It's been my honor and my privilege to serve as the Director of the IU South Bend Civil Rights Heritage Center. And this was more than I ever expected because in one sense, I just felt like I was doing what everyone should do, that the real task that we all bear is to make the world better than when we came into it. And I certainly didn't do it alone. I came ready for work, but there was already a community care that was working. And my commitment for the Civil Rights Heritage Center was simply what I think the whole mission for South Bend and South Bend is to be a national model of how we can get along and how we can work through hard issues, and how we can have difficult conversations and build together. Because either we all build it together or we all fall apart alone. And that's my deepest belief. So I'm just honored. Thank you, and I will continue to do what I do and just with the challenge for all of us to keep working together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doctor. This time I'd like council to comment. I'll start with Ms. White.
Okay. What can I say? I'm saddened, but I'm also happy for you. You have brought a level of bringing the community together where the center is viewed as a place to have those difficult conversations, where everyone is respected, whether they agree or not. But also, you have assisted IU South Bend in becoming a vehicle by which to have those conversations. And the number of programs and individuals that have been through the center since you've been there is just amazing. And the word in the community is that the center is the place to go. And so you've done an excellent job. Your legacy, you have left for us, but it's a legacy that will always live. It's not a legacy that you've created and then it's gone. It's going to be long-lived. And I just hope that others can catch on to the vision and the passion, the commitment that we can have those difficult conversations and that we're better together than we are not working together, and that we have more in common than what we don't have in common. You've done an excellent job, and I wish you Godspeed and the very best that is in store for you. But don't forget IU South Bend and don't forget South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you for your great work in our community.
I understand you're actually taking a one-year leave of absence. You have an option to return. I hope you exercise that option.
Thank you for what you've done and best wishes on your position.
Thank you so much for your outstanding leadership. You built on a legacy and a place that has allowed us to look at our past, but also to envision something new and different together as a community. And you uniquely, I think, in your short time, have enabled that to happen and to be very vibrant, robust conversations. And actually, what I particularly like is the programming that is varied, that is diverse, that invites, however you communicate, however you understand, however you learn, however you connect, the center under your direction has allowed that to happen for so many people across our community. So to have that breadth and openness so that we can all be a part of a true treasure, I think, in our community that has shaped in those four walls. I thank you for expanding my awareness, our awareness, for expanding our sensitivities, our knowledge, our practices, and helping point us to a new vision as a community. And I also wish you best wishes. I concur with Councilmember Fordy, as I know many in our community. Hope that you do circle back here again, if not just to visit, but certainly you've done very well, and we are very appreciative for your professional time and the personal commitment that you've given to our community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say thank you as well for your dedication and commitment to the community. I sat at a number of forums that you had, and just phenomenal to break down a lot of walls and barriers because a lot of conversations are uncomfortable for people. But you did it in such a way with elegance and class, and I just say thank you and the best of love to you and everything that you do because you have helped not just the community, but I know partnering with the social justice or crisis reform are big things in my day-to-day platform. So I just want to say thank you and Godspeed to you.
Dr. Heller, you made an impact on the city. You made an impact on me, and I totally appreciate that. I've always loved your perspective. I've always loved your point of view and your pieces that you've written in the paper. You and I have had busy schedules. We sometimes pass very quickly, but you've had a major impact on me, and I appreciate and respect everything that you've done here. It's just been amazing. So you will truly be missed here. So thank you so much.
President Scott?
Yes.
Do you have another word?
Yes.
I'm going to bring you over here because you shouldn't do all that by yourself. I got to hold up. Okay. I just want to share a little bit from a personal perspective. I first met Dr. Heller when he came for interviews. And, you know, look at him. I mean, he walks in the door and he's a presence automatically. But you think about this guy with these long dreads, he's all tattooed up on a motorcycle, and then you can expect all kinds of things or have all kinds of assumptions about what's going to happen, and then he opens his mouth. And one of the things that I think that was so important for me, that said, that really sold me that you were the man for this job, the question was posed, well, what's your vision for this center? And everybody, you know, had a nice plan, and this is what I do in six months, this is what I do, this is what I do. And what he said was, how can I have a plan for this community? What I need to do is find out what the community wants and then help the community achieve those goals. And I think that more than anything, that really struck me because it showed that he's really sincere and passionate, and it's really not about him, it's really about making the community the best that it can be. And as these years rolled on, he was in so many different circles, as was mentioned. I mean, from political circles, informal, all kinds of things, social circles, and he had a lot of influence. I think one of the things as an activist on my active side that was really great was that when we go in front of like really important people like the mayor or the, who's that school board guy, the superintendent? And they'd always say, well, what does Darrell think? I trust him. So it was great because he was like our little secret weapon. So like anytime anything needed to be said, the hard stuff, we'd send Darrell in, you know? Because everybody trusted him, and he just has that way. He didn't shy away, as Councilwoman White talked about and some others, from the really hard issues. And he challenged us as city leaders and as community members, every single one of us, to really look in the mirror and see what we can do to make a change at whatever space and level that we are in. And there's one thing we talked about, it's like, how can you ever replace? You just can't. And I think one word that was used to describe him was like a unicorn. You know, he has this amazing mix of talent and heart that we just won't find again. So I have to say thank you also to the mayor for bestowing on him the key to the city because as I said the other night, he's going to need that so he can come back anytime and make sure that he's absolutely welcome here. So I want to thank you personally, Darrell.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to say quickly then, you know, I have only been here three and a half years, but it feels like I'm a South Binder. So I learned a couple of words when I first came. South Binder was one. And returning to the bin is another word. But my heart and soul, I really poured my heart and soul here, and it stays. And so I will be back at least to visit that, if nothing else.
Awesome. Thank you. With that, a word to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of this resolution, please come to the podium. I think we got a new guy from the city coming to the podium.
Evening, Pete Vodich with the Alphazam, the 14th floor of the city. I just wanted to echo, especially since I wasn't able to be there at the recent going away event, a couple of things. First of all, the impact, it's hard to believe it's just been three and a half years, the impact that Dr. Heller has had, I think as a voice of reason, I think as a voice of moral clarity in this community, and I think in a spirit that we need to continue going forward because he's really, I think, expanded the vision of what civil rights means. The second thing is I just want to reflect on the expanded importance of the center itself. I think that its relevance has never been greater in the complicated times we live in, and so it's a good thing that the center, each passing year, I think, has grown to be more of a touchstone in this community. So on behalf of the administration, I just want to, oh, one other thing, you should know just how present he is up until the finish line. So even this afternoon, while I know council members were busy doing the city's business, two different times saw Dr. Heller at community events, even before seeing him this evening. So as far as we are concerned, you are officially a South Binder, and that represents that your relationship with the city is for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Mr. Rose.
Hi, I'm Alan Dean DeRose. I'm the city attorney for South Bend, and I know Darrell personally through a program that the local bar association put together a couple of years ago. It's a reading book, a reading book club, and titled Slavery and Justice in America. And when we started our books, we thought that we were a group of fairly enlightened white people, and there are African-Americans in our group as well. But those of us who are white felt that we knew something about this subject, and it turns out we knew nothing. And Darrell, through his wisdom and through his kindness and through his understanding, led us through some very difficult, very poignant, heart-wrenching books that explain the African-American experience in ways that words can never describe. And Darrell, at all times, was understanding of our lack of knowledge and our expression of complete surprise when things were brought to our attention. He organized many of the books and chose many of them that we discussed, and we had the most extraordinary conversations. So he is a man of incredible, incredible talent. He is an extraordinary human being, and I thank you all for making this award possible for him.
Thank you. I believe we have another.
Good evening. My name is Bianca Turrado. I'm at 913 East Washington Street, and I want to share a little bit about how I work with Darrell. Darrell has been so gracious to me because he runs an event called the Poetry Den at the Civil Rights Heritage Center. We've been there for about two years, and he just welcomed us with open arms, and we will miss him very, very much. And I hope he'll come back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will ask if anybody wants to speak against this resolution. Democracy, again. Seeing none, motion to adopt by a committee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much.
Kevin? Kevin, you want to stay or?
Ah, sure. I'll start.
Okay. This time, we don't have any reports from the city offices. I believe Lawrence Oliver, from the mayor's office, is in house with us. Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to raise to the committee.
Sub move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. With that, would the city clerk please read 5518?
5518. Public Heritage Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 14 entitled Special Events on Public Property Regulation.
Can I entertain a motion here to sub?
Sub move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a committee report, please?
The Public Works and Property Vacation Committee met, discussed this earlier, and gave a favorable recommendation to the second sub.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please? I'm sorry, it's their presenting.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jitvin Kane. I'm with the Department of Public Works, with officers on 13th floor of this building. I'd like to go through a brief presentation to talk about the changes to the special event ordinance. A special event is any temporary event that's planned on public property within the city's public right-of-way. And this includes events such as parades and marches, festivals, runs, marathons, and so forth. Here are some facts about special events in the city of South Bend. The city approves approximately 85 special events in the public right-of-way. This does not include events that happen in city parks. There is a separate process to organize a large gathering in a public park, and that goes to the Parks Board. The city's website currently has three different ways of applying for a special event. There are three applications. One is for a residential block party, one is a non-residential block party, and one is for processions. And the current process includes an applicant submitting one of those three applications to the Board of Public Works. It goes through a review process, is sent to various departments for their feedback, is compiled, and then a recommendation is sent to the Board of Public Works, and an official permit is granted at one of the board meetings. So why do we need a new ordinance? There are a few reasons why we're recommending a new ordinance. One is to simplify the process. We are asking to create three tiers of special events. One would be neighborhood scale for events that are small-scale like block parties that occur and attract individuals from within the neighborhood. The other would be a city scale, so these are events that attract people from throughout the city, and then larger events like an art piece that attract individuals, families from around the region. Each of these tiers will have a filing fee structure, which I'll talk about next. The other reason is to improve efficiency. We will be creating a five-person committee that will oversee the event process. We will have meetings as needed, and we will create a single form for all different kinds of events in the public right-of-way as a way to streamline the process. Another reason is to create a more equitable sharing cost share. Currently, the city sponsors all public events, and what that means is that we provide our staff support through PD, traffic and lighting, and other means for all events in the city. And while we support and encourage events, we think it's fair to ask for some type of a cost share for the larger events that take up a tremendous amount of city staff. And so these would be events like large parades or races that tend to block off multiple streets over a long distance. What we are proposing is for profit organizations would cover 100% of event costs, but nonprofits, the city would still cover costs up to 32 hours of South Bend PD time and up to eight hours of Public Works time. Anything above that, which would be limited to, you know, really a small number of events, would be covered by the event organizers. Events such as block parties would not be impacted because they typically require only one or two staff people to help organize. Uh, for example, for tier one, um, we will accept applications up to 14 days prior to an event. However, if an applicant files, uh, the application 45 days before the event, they will pay the $25 and if it's between 44 and 14 days, they will pay the $50, which is the current filing fee. For tier two and three, similar idea, um, if they file, because tier two and three events take much longer for our staff to coordinate, there will be, um, a filing fee of $50. However, if it's within that expedited period, there will be a higher filing fee. Demonstrations, uh, First Amendment expressive activities are protected activities. There will be no fee for those. Um, demonstrations do require a 72-hour, uh, notification and a form will be available as part of this application process, which, uh, will go to our events coordinator who will notify the police chief about these events. Um, a demonstration form applies to any event where a crowd of more than, greater than 25 is expected. And then the ordinance also talks about, uh, ban of certain tools, uh, during demonstrations as well as, uh, no face coverings for safety reasons. Uh, we have a section on civic sponsored events. In addition to outside entities organizing events, the city itself also organizes events. Example is Best Week Ever, organized by Parks Department. These activities, these events will be categorized as civic sponsored events. Uh, in addition to the city's own events, uh, we will, uh, allow the opportunity for certain third-party events to become, uh, sponsored or part of these, um, civic sponsored events if they follow these three criteria. One would be they must not charge a fee to the participants, they must be a nonprofit and that the event must be, uh, part of a greater, uh, good for the city. The event decisions will be made by a special event committee. Uh, five individuals representing different departments of the city that are engaged in these events will meet on a regular basis. The advantage of forming a committee over, um, sending the applications out to the different departments is that it allows for, um, a, a gathering, a combined conversation on these events. It also encourages the applicant to meet with the committee on a regular basis, answer questions and expedite the permitting process. Um, any denial given by the special events committee can go through an appeals process and that's through the Board of Public Works. The appeal must be filed within, uh, three business days of a decision by the committee and then the hearing will be at the next board, uh, Public Works meeting. Um, and, uh, in conclusion, the effective date of this ordinance is being recommended as, uh, as January 1. We are suggesting a small grace period for those, um, applications that might come in right-of-way. Typically more events, uh, start getting organized after March. Um, we will be communicating with the event applicants that we already have in our database and we will let them know of the process, but we will, uh, reach out through social media and other means to engage, uh, with the community and let them know of the new process. Um, and then we are developing a, a guide to, uh, let applicants know of how the process will work. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Oh, sorry. Mr. Chair.
You see council members, for those of you who don't recognize me out of uniform, my name is Travis Council. I'm the South Bend Police Chief. My office is at 701 West. Um, just a couple of things that I was jotting down as Jitin was, was speaking. First of all, let me say that I, I think every council member except maybe one or two, uh, have been pushing, asking, et cetera, uh, to get this, this special events policy ordinance done. I know the mayor has as well. I can tell you the mayor's exact words and he wouldn't even be mad at me. Get it done. Five years is what this has taken. So I looked, I was looking, some in the back of the room, could see everybody in here and most people in this room, at least, uh, pretty close to half have been involved in the special event policy somehow. Bob Aladeen as well. Um, so, so much appreciation from our end, not just from the administrative component, but a physical and psychological toll on the officers. When we're told, hey, there's an event Saturday, by the way, this is Thursday afternoon, you can just use your imagination to, to know what that entails. Uh, but with that being said, one thing, one thing I just want to hit on that, that Jitin didn't mention, uh, also with it, and it's in the packet, um, the route control. Uh, we'll actually have a say in the route control for two. Number one is for safety reasons first and foremost. Uh, we know what things to look for. We do this 24/7/365. And also for traffic flow. Um, I'm sure you can use your imagination. Any event that happens when people have to wait in their cars, uh, it's not very easy when you're standing out in the middle of the street and a 4,000-pound car wants to get through with a, with somebody who, who really wants to get through. So we, we can look at both of those components and we'll be able to plan that out in advance. Uh, I have Lieutenant Ister, who's our special events coordinator, uh, obviously instrumental in this process, uh, process. I don't know if he wants to say anything or not. Hopefully not. We, we think he'll just leave it on me. But again, so much, I would ask obviously the council, uh, to please, uh, to pass this and thank you to all for the hard work to get this finally done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council, what's your pleasure?
Uh, make a motion, send 61, I mean 55-18 to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second sub.
Second sub.
Uh, motion for the second sub. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, can I entertain a motion to, is there an appetite to continue? 61.
Yes, um, do you want me to speak now or do you want to?
Is there a committee report?
Well, uh, would somebody like to make a motion? I, I understood there was an appetite to make a motion to continue. Is that?
Yes, and I will be requesting that. If you'd like, I can do it now or I can do it after you speak.
That's, so as requested by the officials, there are motion to continue?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move, I'll move that we continue, uh, bill 61, uh, 18 to, uh, January 14.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. City clerk, would you please read 62-18?
62-18. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, proposing transfers to various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year of 2018.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a, uh, committee meeting and public hearing on this bill and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
I would like to personally thank, uh, Deputy City Controller Brad and his staff, all the hard work that they've done on these five bills that we will be discussing. I would like to say that, um, he met with some of the council members prior to this particular meeting and a number of questions and clarity was given and each council member, she should have received copies of those questions as well as those responses. I would like to say that also today, uh, during the committee meeting, all the department heads were present. We sincerely appreciate them being here to address any questions that we might have had on these five bills. That meeting really went all the way to about 6:20. So again, we're very, uh, we're very appreciative and, uh, again, um, great work and, uh, hopefully we will have your, um, support as we move forward through these five bills.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you. Benjamin Dory, Deputy City Controller from the Department of Administration and Finance, upstairs on the 12th floor. If I may begin by, uh, matching your gratitude, Councilmember White. Let me just say, for my first time through the process of, of leading through on budget transfers and additional appropriations, it was a pleasure to have the opportunity first to meet with some of you all in advance and to work through the requests and have an open dialogue about it. But not only that, to also have the opportunity earlier this evening to methodically go through each of these bills and answer questions and concerns. Grateful for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Beginning here with bill number 62-18, as I mentioned during our discussion earlier this evening, you'll find that these are, as we have typically presented to you in the past, these are grouped by fund and department. These budget transfers ultimately create, uh, no net change in the amount of the appropriations under the 2018 adopted budget, uh, but instead represent transfers back and forth across expense categories within the depart, departmental budgets. Um, as I mentioned before, the first several pages of the additional, uh, excuse me, of the attachment to this bill, which is in spreadsheet form, those represent, uh, the various departmental budget transfers that are being requested. And then the remainder of that document contains all of the account number adjustments that are being accomplished through budget transfers for the Century Center operations. Would be happy to, to reiterate that explanation if anybody would like to hear it again. Um, and I think with that, I'd be happy to ans, answer any further questions on this one. Again, budget transfers here are those which represent a net zero change to the budgeted appropriations.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council, what's your pleasure?
I move that this bill be sent to the, um, to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 63-18?
63-18. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2018 of $269,500 from the General Fund 101, $850,000 from the Recreation Non-Reverting Fund, Non-Reverting Fund 203, $50,000 from the Gift Donation and Request Fund 272, $37,000 from the Law Enforcement and Continual Education Fund 222, $608,836 from Central Service Funds 222, $708,000 from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund 226, $254,000 from the Low-Wid 2015 Special Distribution Fund 257, $9,100 from the Human Rights Federal Grant Fund 258, $30,500 from the Local Road and Bridge Grant Fund 265, $20,000 from the Take Home Vehicle Police Fund 278, $393,400 from the IT Innovation slash 311 Call Center Fund Number 279, $26 from the Economic Revenue Bond Fund 281, $21,735 from the Police Grants Fund 292, $2,000 from the Airport 2003 Debt Reserve Fund 315, $10,000 from the SBCDA 2003 Debt Reserve Fund Number 328, $1,050,000 from the COIT Fund 404, $130,000 from the Park Non-Reverting Capital Fund 405, $116,202 from the Accumulative Capital Redevelopment Fund 406, $783,670 from the Eddy Fund 408, $665,817 from the Equipment Vehicle Leasing Fund 750, $64,421 from the South Bend Development Ability Fund 752 and minus $22,974,385 from the Eddy Street Commons Capital Fund 759.
Thank you. Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee have held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill. We sent it to you with a favorable, uh, recommendation. I would like to ask, um, uh, the Deputy Controller if he, during your opening comments, can really clarify the $22 million from Eddy Street Commons.
Most definitely. Thank you. Bill number, uh, 63-18 is distinct from the budget transfers that were dealt with in the prior bill. These here represent new additional appropriations out of the Civil-City Funds, meaning, so to speak, new money that is being requested as additional on top of what the amended 2018 budget contains. Uh, the most notable, as Councilmember White points out, the most notable perhaps just in terms of its, uh, its sheer size and the fact that it's a negative number, is nearly $23 million out of Fund 759 related to Eddy Street Commons Capital. In a nutshell, that reduction of the budget is meant to adjust for the fact that at the end of 2017, rolling over into 2018, there existed an encumbrance of those funds comprised of, uh, the expectation for this project of spending down the bond proceeds that were, uh, collected through the issuance of new debt for the Phase Two of that project during 2017. When that encumbrance rolled over into 2018 and on top of that, the 2018 budget appropriation was adopted, we wound up with, on paper, effectively a doubled budget, if you will, for that fund. The action before you now contains a reduction of about $23 million to back out that, that carryover into 2018 and to clarify that that budget in fact is the proper amount for the expenditure of the bond proceeds. So in effect, a very large number that doesn't relate to anything on the ground with respect to the project per se, but instead an accounting adjustment so that our record is clear that the carryover from 2017 to 2018 is now being addressed through this reduction. Happy to answer further questions, but that's more or less a housekeeping item for us.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council.
Make motion, send 63-18 to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 64-18?
64-18. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2018 of $157,435 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, $190,000 from the Solid Waste Operations Fund 610, $12,000 from the Waterworks Customer Deposit Fund Number 624, $8,000 from the Waterworks Debt Service Fund Number 625, $10,000 from the Waterworks Bond Reserve Number 626, $25,000 from the Waterworks OM Reserve Fund Number 629, $6,600 from the Sewer Works Operating Fund Number 641 and $55,000 from the Sewer Works OM Reserve Fund 643.
Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, thank you again. 60, uh, excuse me, 64-18 relates to additional appropriations, but now this time on the enterprise fund side of the house and, uh, a smaller number here, much more, um, confined to just these particular enterprise funds and their regular operations. We had some discussion earlier in the committee meeting concerning, uh, maintenance for solid waste trucks and so forth, which was, uh, a good, a good trigger for a discussion of some operational changes and improvements there. Uh, other than that, I would consider these largely to be within the ordinary course of business and, uh, nothing extraordinary, although from the perspective of the 2018 budget, unanticipated and therefore requiring additional appropriations. Happy to answer any of their questions about these.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the, back to the council.
Move for the passage of 64-18. Favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 65-18?
65-18. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2018 of $157,435 from the Consolidated Building Fund Number 600, $190,000 from the Solid Waste Operations Fund 610, $12,000 from the Waterworks Customer Deposit Fund Number 624, $8,000 from the Waterworks Debt Service Fund Number 625, $10,000 from the Waterworks Bond Reserve Number 626, $25,000 from the Waterworks OM Reserve Fund Number 629, $6,600 from the Sewer Works Operating Fund Number 641 and $55,000 from the Sewer Works OM Reserve Fund 643.
Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill and we sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, thank you again. 60, uh, excuse me, 64-18 relates to additional appropriations, but now this time on the enterprise fund side of the house and, uh, a smaller number here, much more, um, confined to just these particular enterprise funds and their regular operations. We had some discussion earlier in the committee meeting concerning, uh, maintenance for solid waste trucks and so forth, which was, uh, a good, a good trigger for a discussion of some operational changes and improvements there. Uh, other than that, I would consider these largely to be within the ordinary course of business and, uh, nothing extraordinary, although from the perspective of the 2018 budget, unanticipated and therefore requiring additional appropriations. Happy to answer any of their questions about these.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the, back to the council.
Move for the passage of 64-18. Favorable recommendation.
Favorable recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City clerk, would you please read 65-18?
65-18. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 2, article 14 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the leading, section 2-169, 2-170.2, 2-170.3, 2-170.4, 2-170.5 and 2-170.6, which establishes various special funds associated with the Amending Parks and Arts Department.
Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on bill 65-18. We send this bill to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, good evening again, council. Aaron Perry, Executive Director, Venus Parks and Arts, 301 South St. Louis. Uh, the bills before you really bring in line the legislation, uh, with what was already approved during budget process, um, which, as we underscored at the time, puts us into a more transparent and, and simpler accounting sequence. It's really in line with the, the way the departments. It's really in line with the way the departments functionally operated over the past decade. Fund balances will be all transferred to two oh one and further tracked by account codes and project codes so that they can be used for their intended purposes. Your previous approval actually brought in approximately eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from fund two oh three and a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars from fund four oh five.
Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council. What's your pleasure?
Make motion, send sixty-five eighteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, would you please read sixty-six eighteen?
Sixty-six eighteen. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter two, article twelve of the South Bend Municipal Code regarding the administration and maintenance of the public cemeteries in the city of South Bend, and amending chapter two, article fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code to establish special funds for the permanent maintenance of city-owned cemeteries.
Is there a committee report, please?
Yes, the personnel finance committee held a committee meeting and public hearing on this bill. We sent it to you with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter, please?
Yes, Benjamin Doherty, deputy city controller. Bill number sixty-six dash eighteen is what I would consider a further kind of housekeeping bill by which we are requesting that the common council establish a new and separate fund for the management of what turned out to be the proceeds of a former trust that has now been dissolved and handed over to the city to separately maintain those funds for the benefit of ongoing perpetual care of the Bowman Cemetery. I had one piece of homework since the time of our committee meeting discussion, which was to respond to councilmember Broden's question about the amount of those trust funds at the time that the trust was dissolved. And I did go back to confirm, the number was four hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-three cents. The wire transfer that handed those funds over from Key Bank as the former trustee to the city was received here by the city on October fifteenth in that amount.
Thank you.
Does that clarify the...
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Happy to answer any further questions about this. Again, with basically two purposes in mind for this ordinance. On the one hand, in order to protect and properly manage those funds that are now in the city's hands, to establish what is fund seven thirty-one, a new separate fund for Bowman Cemetery, distinct from the city cemetery's fund. And on the other hand, to do some cleanup, if you will, of the substantive cemetery maintenance provisions within our municipal code and to ensure that those are consistent with and aligned with the state law. So those are the two ideas here. Again, happy to answer any questions about that.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council.
Make motion seven sixty-six eighteen to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We'll entertain a motion to rise and resolve from the committee of the whole. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Phil Council is now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give second substitute to fifty-five eighteen?
Second substitute to fifty-five eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new article fourteen entitled "Special Events on Public Property Regulations."
Motion to hear the second substitute?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion on the second.
Motion for passage to the second.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-two eighteen, please.
Sixty-two eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year two thousand and eighteen.
Motion for the passage of bill sixty-two dash eighteen.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Sixty-three eighteen, please.
Sixty-three eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in two thousand and eighteen of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund one oh one, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the recreation non-reverting fund two oh three, fifty thousand dollars from the gift request and donation fund two seventeen, thirty-seven thousand dollars from the law enforcement continuing education fund two twenty, six hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars from the central services fund two twenty-two, seven hundred and eight thousand from the liability insurance premium reserve fund two twenty-six, two hundred and fifty-four thousand from the low-wit two thousand and sixteen special distribution fund two fifty-seven, nine thousand one hundred dollars from the human rights federal grant fund two fifty-eight, thirty thousand five hundred dollars from the local road and bridge grant fund two sixty-five, twenty thousand dollars from the take-home vehicle police fund two seventy-eight, three hundred and ninety-three thousand four hundred dollars from the IT innovation three-one-one call center fund number two seventy-nine, twenty-six dollars from the economic revenue bond fund two eighty-one, twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from the police grants fund two ninety-two, two thousand dollars from the airport two thousand three debt reserve fund three fifteen, ten thousand dollars from the SBCDA two thousand three debt reserve fund number three twenty-eight, one million fifty thousand dollars from the COIT fund four oh four, one hundred and thirty thousand from the park non-reverting capital fund four oh five, one hundred and sixteen thousand two hundred and two dollars from the cumulative capital development fund four oh six, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand six hundred and seventy dollars from the edict fund four oh eight, six hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars from the equipment vehicle leasing fund seven fifty, sixty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars from the South Bend Development Authority Fund number seven fifty-two, and minus twenty-two million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars from the Eddie Street Commons Capital Fund seven fifty-nine.
Motion for passage. Great job, Kareem.
Sorry. Kareem, you can breathe and then do more.
Uh, councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. If you're ready, sixty-four eighteen.
Uh, sixty-four eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in two thousand and eighteen of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars from the consolidated building fund six hundred, one hundred and ninety thousand from the solid waste operations fund six-ten, twelve thousand from the waterworks customer deposit fund six twenty-four, eight thousand from the waterworks debt service fund six twenty-five, ten thousand dollars from the waterworks bond reserve fund six twenty-six, twenty-five thousand from the waterworks OM reserve fund six twenty-nine, six thousand six hundred dollars from the sewage works operating fund six forty-one, and fifty-five thousand from the sewage works OM reserve fund six forty-three.
Move for the passage of sixty-four eighteen. Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-five eighteen, please.
Sixty-five eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter two, article fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code by deleting section two dash sixty-nine, two dash seventy point two, two dash seventy point three, two dash seventy point four, two dash seventy point five, and two dash seventy point six, which establishes various special funds associated with the vending parks and arts department.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Sixty-six eighteen, please.
Sixty-six eighteen. Third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana amending chapter two, article twelve of the South Bend Municipal Code regarding the administration and maintenance of public cemeteries in the city of South Bend, and amending chapter two, article fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code to establish special funds for the permanent maintenance of the city-owned cemeteries.
Motion for passage? Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. We will move to resolutions. Ms. Fowler, would you please read eighteen seventy-four?
Eighteen seventy-four. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana calling for the continued provision of temporary shelter and protection from severe weather conditions in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Uh, is there a committee report?
Oh, yes.
She's in transfer. Chair?
The committee that today gave a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to accept the sum?
Someone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great. Thank you. Is there a presenter or presentors?
Yes, I'm Oliver Davis. Glad to be co-sponsoring this resolution. Um, well, eighteen oh one, Nashville, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one three. Thank you, Vice President. Glad to be co-sponsoring this resolution with Ms. Jeff Broden, Ms. Sharon McBride, and Ms. Karen White, all councilwomen who helped out in this. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. James Miller and the administration for weighing in and sharing their thoughts. One of the things that we may have debated on different issues and at times disagreed on different things, but one thing that I like about the city of South Bend is that we are the only city in this area, the only governmental unit that I know, that has really been talking about homelessness and issues. I have not heard that from my other colleagues tonight. One of our parts of our resolution is going to invite them to join in our discussions and work along with us because this is not just a city of South Bend issue, this is a community issue, this is a county issue. And we have been working to take care of our cities that are all nearby, even into the state of Michigan. And so, we need to come together and really continue to push this effort, raise our voices for those who don't have a voice, lift them up because the city is only as strong as its weakest links, and we need to make sure that we all have a strong band together, and that's where we are. So, we're going to divide up this resolution, the resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, calling for the continued weather provisions of temporary shelter, protection from severe weather conditions in the city of South Bend, Indiana. And so, we will start off with Councilwoman McBride, then Councilwoman Broden, then I'll close, reading this resolution. Thank you so kindly for allowing us to present. Thank you, sir.
Chairman McBride, four fifteen, East Broadway Street, South Bend, Indiana. Whereas the South Bend Common Council's mission statement is to make certain that our city government is always responsive to the needs of our residents and that the betterment of South Bend is always our highest priority. And whereas the common council is committed to protecting its residents from life-threatening weather conditions which periodically occur in our city because all of our brothers and sisters are entitled to be treated with dignity and assisting, helping our residents, but these types of housing is a shared responsibility between individual and the government. And whereas the St. Joseph County Region Two-A Homeless Regional Planning Council, representing service providers and others, has recognized that issues involving the homeless require the partnership of both private and public entities to solve. And whereas on October twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, the South Bend Common Council unanimously voted to rezone the Formal Cutting Tools, Inc. building at one-two-one East Tuck Street from light industrial to mixed use in order that it can be used as a weather amnesty shelter starting on November first, two thousand and eighteen, and operating to April first, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas the Center for the Homeless in South Bend, Indiana, has had ten to fifteen men in for winter amnesty since the start of November, according to executive director Steve Camilleri, who also stated that a maximum of fifteen occupants is limited by an occupancy permit. And whereas in prior years before two thousand and eighteen, Light Treatment Centers, Inc. has provided weather amnesty services for women in the city of South Bend, Indiana, but no longer providing those services. And...
Great.
Whereas in twenty seventeen, the year twenty seventeen, one of the previous weather amnesty sites, which was the former Crafts Construction Building at two-one-one West Monroe Street, did not open its doors until December one, two thousand and seventeen. And whereas there was an undesirable delay in opening a needed second weather amnesty shelter this year until November twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen, despite previous conditions of snow, freezing rain, and temperatures falling into the teens as early as November tenth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the problem of homelessness is very difficult to resolve, but a private and public partnership to provide emergency shelters to protect lives during severe weather conditions does not require the same comprehensive solution as does the problem of homelessness. And whereas, although the city of South Bend has increased its support for weather amnesty services, service providers over the past two years, as well as for other long-term solutions, it has not, does not currently, and does not intend to provide direct services for the homeless or operate a weather amnesty shelter. Whereas the city of South Bend opens emergency warming and cooling centers during emergency temperature conditions in coordination with the Emergency Management Agency of St. Joe County, also known as Emergency Management. And whereas the function of a resolution is to express the policy and/or intent of the common council.
Now, therefore, being dissolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the city of South Bend will work with the emergency management to define emergency temperatures and other emergency weather events. Section two, the city of South Bend will work with emergency management to identify, maintain, and make known to its residents places of shelter during severe weather, whether that weather be a result of heat, heat index, cold, wind chill, or other life-threatening conditions such as tornadoes. Section three, the gateway or intake center, defined in part as a single entry point into the system of care linking homeless individuals with shelter, case management, and appropriate community services, is not operational by November one, two thousand and nineteen. The city of South Bend will encourage service providers of weather amnesty that are supported by the city of South Bend and resources to meet the weather amnesty start date of November one by beginning the process as early as possible, no later than June one, two thousand and nineteen. And with expedite all five building codes, inspection and permitting requirements by state, local, and other entities to the maximum extent possible while still ensuring the safety of the buildings for occupancy and use. Section four, that all community partners who are supported by the city of South Bend for construction, leasing, and any other fees associated with operating a weather amnesty shelter in the city of South Bend meet the expected timelines to commence the start and ending dates of the weather amnesty program, and section five, that representatives of local governments, including city of South Bend, city of Michoacan, Saint Joe County Council, the Saint Joe County Commissioners, and the local public school service providers, public safety officers, business representatives, officials, the criminal justice systems, neighborhood advocates, academics, community members, and all others come together in the year two nineteen, and thereafter, the planned services for homeless populations, including establishment of a gateway or intake center, and additional scattered site permanent supportive housing units and solutions to help housing and stability matters, should be coming in this committee, matters, and so, I forgot the last word, but let's try, yeah, put the word matters inside, isn't it? Um, thank you. Yeah, again, it shows collaborative effort of everybody coming together to really emphasize, we have, we can see what we have done in the past, we can learn from it, we can maximize our strengths, we can minimize our failures, and come together to make our city a model, which we've talked about in earlier tonight, to really, to help us to really lead how we handle, because not all the other cities have to deal with all seasonal challenges, some deal with hot all the time, others cold, but we have to deal with homeless issues throughout the whole entire year, and how they deal with heat, and how they deal with weather, and that is cold, and so, we are glad to be here, delighted to present this to you. Questions?
Thank you.
Yes, as one of the co-sponsors, I wish to, uh, thank Mr. Davis, I mean, council member Davis for bringing this before us, and also for the other council, um, members, uh, Councilwoman Broden and McBride, for coming together to put together what we have before us, we would like to acknowledge the work of community investment, and others, and of course, our attorney, for the work that they've done to ensure that what we have before us is the very best at this particular time, I'm very appreciative of section number four and five, because it makes it much broader based in regards to the other entities that needs to be at the table, just, you know, besides just South Bend, Indiana, and again, I think it's very important that we start the conversations early on, and that we work collaboratively together to address, uh, a public, um, health issue within our community, and I think South Bend has stepped up, and we need to involve other entities as well, and this particular resolution speaks to that, and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you, um, at this time, any questions for the presenters from council? Any comments at this time? Ms. Preston.
I just want to echo some of what, um, Councilwoman White mentioned, first, thank you, Oliver, for being a champion of this, as well as Councilwoman Broden and McBride, on this homelessness issue, which affects not just any one particular particular city, but the entire city, and again, this is important, I look forward to, um, coming together with, uh, regional partners, the county, Michoacan, other areas, to make sure that we're doing, uh, this right and doing this well, um, I also want to thank, thank you to all of you who are here tonight, um, you know, with your, your, um, activism, with your posters, it really makes a difference, it means a lot, um, I can't say that we would really be on this issue like we are, um, as much as I'd like to say we are as leaders, if it wasn't for the community really coming out, and, and thank you for everything that you do in the interim, while we're trying to get this together, you guys are out there every day making it happen for those people who are in need on the street, so we really appreciate you coming out and doing what you do as well.
I think, Jaker. I do want to say one thing, I, I do appreciate all, uh, the co-sponsors and sponsors of, of this bill, thank you very much, uh, it was that conversation that we had a few, uh, months back when, uh, we were voting before on doing this, and I think Vice President Davis, you and I had a conversation about that, um, I think section five on here is very important, and, uh, I agree with Ms. Preston, um, you, the people that are here, you know, voicing their opinion, uh, we definitely appreciate, and, uh, is this city doing everything it could, um, some say yes, some say no, I think there's always room for improvement, um, I do like the fact that we're adding Michoacan, Saint Joe County, and I hope that that is being pushed as well with their governments as well, we do hear a lot here, and I have to say, is, I, I think in this county, we are taking the lead, and I think this council recognizes that, and I know members are very passionate about this, I think all of us take it seriously and, um, do what we can do, and, and always look for more opportunities down the road, and I thank you guys for taking the lead on this, um, is there any other comments from council at this time? Nope, thank you?
Oh, anyone else?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, just a couple things, I think, to, um, highlight, um, I'm particularly excited about putting this in writing, um, for a number of reasons, one is, we nail a collective date, right, for the amnesty program to, uh, launch, get put in place by a specific deadline, I think that's something as a community, um, this resolution, at least on behalf of the council, and, um, those individuals whom we represent, uh, from our districts or as at-large members, you know, we are nailing that, that, that date in time, okay? So that's number one, I think, um, number two is, as many of you have indicated, and I don't want this, uh, to, to be missed, but, um, two other things that are nailed here is, uh, the vision and the need, uh, specifically for the intake center, gateway center, as mentioned, and also, um, if maybe not in some regards, at least in my estimation, the additional scattered site permanent supportive housing units, as a community, all right, and it's not just us sitting here, um, but it, it is, you know, those other entities that are represented in section five, I mean, it won't happen, the gateway center, nor the scattered site permanent supportive housing, if this isn't on our radar as a community, and it's not a shared goal by our community, but not only does it need to be a goal, it has to be something that we are, uh, decided in meeting, achieving, implementing, so, um, there was a, there was some terminology that was inserted in here, and, um, I don't know if it was concerted effort, but the concept is, it's not going to happen unless there's leadership, unless there's collaboration, um, I have stated, uh, previous that, um, I do think it does, um, merit and warrant, um, leadership, uh, a leadership position, if you would, uh, where if the city of South Bend has to take the leadership in, the coordination and that collaboration, um, so be it, uh, I will be, uh, eager to support, I have been in the past, I've been vocal about it, and, um, if it's going to happen, we may need to be, not may, I think we need to lead on it, and, um, and it needs to be, uh, a conversation, and it needs to be collaboration that is ongoing, that does, you know, doesn't, you know, bubble up, um, you know, at certain times of the year, it's an ongoing, the challenges are huge, and I think we're up to it as a community, and I think we're up to it, the city of South Bend, to lead and to bring and convene the other partners who are mentioned in section five, my own personal comments.
Ms. McBride, anything?
I would just like to add that, uh, by saying that I am honored to be a part of this resolution, and would like to thank the council for working so hard together, um, through all of the kinks, and working with the administration to get something in writing and to get something done, and a special thank you for not giving up, this is a good step in the right direction for helping the community and, um, all the constituents that we all represent, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Davis, any final remarks?
I was thinking about, that Starfish people said, um, you know, with so many different things, we work with homeless situations, it seems impossible, but for everyone that we save, as a one family, that could be a son, that could be your relative, could be somebody you know, could be you, you never know, because so many people are just a paycheck away from having a situation similar to what people are going through, and I've seen it in my own family, and, um, you know, it's important for us to really come together, and this really challenges the community, it's not an easy issue, you know, and debate is good, because each one of us, through the discussions, through the disagreements, and through the agreements, we come out a brand new team where we can come and help people, again, strengthen our city, so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, I think we have unison here, um, with that, we will open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this resolution, please come to the podium, if you're speaking in favor of this, uh, you have five minutes, Devin Furlik will time you and give you an exit warning, if you would, please speak to the resolution that is before us, uh, and if there are multiple people, please have unique comments, if you agree with the person that is saying something, you can raise your hand, and the council will note that, um, and we'll get started, name and address, sir.
Jason Medickin Kritzlo, thirty-eight twenty-two Ford Street, South Bend, Indiana, uh, this, this is an easy one for anybody to support, I think, one of the key elements, I think, that is very important is, is section five, as was noted by many before, uh, because while we bear the brunt here in South Bend of the homeless issue because we have most of the services for them, they tend to congregate here, they come far and wide to be here, so I feel like it's only fair that the others should have to, to share that expense, um, and I know it's been talked about before, and I was against it then, but I think this would be an excellent time to visit the idea of trying to find some additional funding to help with this kind of thing in the future, this is something where I could get behind saying a one percent food and beverage tax would be an excellent idea, because if you're going to spend one dollar per hundred on your, your night out, it'd be nice to know that it's going to a very helpful cause for the least of us when we're, we're enjoying our night out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name and address, sir.
Hi, John Schaper, address is four oh two Bison Ridge, Nappy, Indiana, four six five five zero.
Thank you.
Um, as director of Michigan Five for the Homeless, um, I want to thank those members of the council who put this resolution together, we hope that it will be more than just words on paper, and that it will be passed, uh, I especially want to thank Oliver Davis, uh, for his involvement, uh, we are here tonight, uh, with some members from the community and advocates, um, to bring a request that we have weather amnesty, no later than November first, and a permanent location for weather amnesty is a must, we can't go through year after year saying where are we going to put the homeless this year, uh, weather amnesty needs to be specifically weather-related and not necessarily date-related, because even before November first, and that should be the deadline, but no more December first, or, or, you know, we need to act upon the weather and not a specific date, our homeless do not deserve to freeze, there was two people last night turned away from weather amnesty, now, this was presented to me, you have a building where it's warm, people are eating, they can look through the glass doors, they approach and they are told that they are full at their fifty capacity, and these two people, who are men, were turned away, and what if it had been women, what if it had been a family with children, there should be no excuse that anyone has to freeze, or that anyone is turned away from weather amnesty, our homeless deserve the same concerns for safety that we are often encouraged to bring our pets inside when it is cold, but we don't do it with our people. It is stated that the Center for the Homeless is considering doing away with their fifteen spots for weather amnesty, this has yet to be confirmed, but we currently have sixty-five spots for weather amnesty, if we lose those fifteen, we are going backwards, and sixty-five spots currently is what we had last year, no more, no less, but the less may come if the Center for the Homeless decides to end their weather amnesty program, fifty will not be sufficient when it's not even sufficient now, and a couple people are turned away, and there will be other colder nights where people will be turned away, we have a wind chill currently of around seventeen, eighteen degrees, when it's colder and we get to the capacity of fifty, do we just turn these people away needlessly to freeze? We ask that the resolution, eighteen seventy-four, meets total council approval, it is cold out, let's do what is necessary, but also what is humane, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, anyone else? Come on up, name and address.
Hi, my name is Amanda Robinson, I'm at seven zero two North Hill Street, um, I definitely, I didn't come in here for the homelessness issue, but I am definitely aware, I'm an aid up to South Bend, born at Memorial Hospital, born and raised here, um, homelessness is an issue not just here in South Bend, but definitely an issue all around, and I would love if we could be a model city, so I can be proud of South Bend where I'm coming from, like Oliver, we just, um, some of us are just a paycheck away from being homeless, and that is so true, um, I mean, definitely things need to change, and I would love to see if we can be a model, um, very bluntly, I will say that, you know, leaving the homeless out there, it's costing more from like hospital bills and other things than to try to give them not just a temporarily home, or weather amnesty, but looking more into permanent type situations, um, homelessness issue is not the same for everyone, um, you know, some are addicts, some have mental health, some are just on bad luck, um, but it is an issue, so I would love if South Bend could do something about it, instead of driving around and seeing these homeless people in the streets in this cold weather, it's really sad to see, so I hope we can do something about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Burton, four nine nine one, north four seventy-five east, Leesburg, Indiana, um, I'm here because I come to South Bend a lot, um, I have a lot of friends and, and things that I do in South Bend, and I have, um, just a week ago, I was here for the protest outside this building in regards to the same issue, and we were out there for only an hour, and by the time we were done, my fingers were numb, my toes were numb, I was cold, really, really, really cold, and it was only an hour, and these people are sleeping in this temperature, and these people could be getting serious, you know, health issues from sleeping in this kind of cold, so I guess I'm just trying to raise awareness that in just an hour, fingers and toes are going numb, can you imagine what would happen if these people are out there for hours, nights, days, at a time without any shelter, um, and the other point I wanted to make too is, in the past year, we've seen signs in downtown South Bend discouraging panhandling, we've seen, um, the homeless people having their property taken from them under the bridges and places that they congregate because of the only place they can go, and instead of making these people feel like a burden on society, we need to make them feel like they're valued and valid and important, and that's why I support this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jennifer Robinson, and I live at three nine oh two Greenmont Drive, and I am in favor of this, and I hope that you guys will really look at this and make sure that it passes as well, um, I do think we had an improvement since last year, I do remember all the skids getting moved and things under the bridge, which I thought was inhumane to take away all their possessions, so I am glad for at least the improvement of this year, um, but I hope you guys really are serious and pass it, and don't just think of the homeless or people who want to be out there because they want to be, because they really don't, there's either some type of issue why they're out there for a reason, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak against this resolution, eighteen seventy-four, please come to the podium, seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Councilmember McBride.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Councilmember Teschka.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Boarding.
Aye.
Councilmember Furley.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you, we will move on to first readings, please. We'll check this out. Yeah, we did. Thank you all, we will move on to first readings, uh, Ms. Fowler, please read sixty-seven eighteen.
Sixty-seven eighteen, first according to the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving one subpart each of section thirteen dash twenty-six and thirteen dash twenty-seven, chapter thirteen, article eleven, of the South Bend Municipal Code by removing certain restrictions on tattoo practitioners and license.
Uh, I move that, uh, this be sent to community investment for, uh, second hearing and, uh, public, or, sorry, second reading and public hearing on, uh, January fourteenth.
Second.
Paul and Phil.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you, sixty-eight eighteen, please.
Sixty-eight eighteen, first according to the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the city of South Bend update for the city, two thousand and thirteen, ABA plan for pedestrians' facilities and the public right of way, and it's titled, title five plan for non-discrimination in the city, in city services, programs, and activities under the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
I move that this be sent to, uh, our Health and Public Safety Committee, uh, for second reading and public hearing on January fourteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Thank you. 6918, please.
6918. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and seeking a special exception for property located at 2610 East Johnson Boulevard, Councilman Nick District Number Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move that this be sent to Area Plan Commission for their meeting on January 15th, and then back to council and our Zoning and Anexation Committee for second reading and public hearing on January 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 718, please.
718. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 31, I mean, at 131 Chatham Street, Councilman Nick District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move that this is well be sent to Area Plan for their meeting on January 15th, and then back to council, Zoning and Anexation for hearing on January 20th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Can we have a motion on 1873, please? Under unfinished business.
I move that 1873 be sent to Zoning and Anexation for our meeting on January 14th.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. With that, we'll turn to new business. Any new business at this time? Yes. Vice President Davis?
I'd like to congratulate Councilwoman Karen White for having perfect attendance at council meetings this year. Yes, indeed. She did it.
Thank you so much.
She's the only one, perfect attendance. I held that distinction and Regina last year, we did it for the last couple of years. Regina and I missed one, but she's all alone. She got it. She worked hard.
I sure did.
She worked hard. She came in all type of weather, no matter how she felt, sick and dead, she came. That was her goal last year, and she kept her resolution, so I want to congratulate her.
I just wanted to notify everybody else, we were grading on the curb, so that's... So, thank you, Vice President Davis. Anything else on your new business? Ms. Preston?
Just another announcement. The Community Relations Committee will hold a meeting this Wednesday, December 12th. Specific topic with regards to public schools in South Bend, and it starts at 6 o'clock right here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Broden?
Yes. Utilities and the Health and Public Safety Committee are looking at a combined meeting to hear, on January 9th, to hear information that will be voted on by the Sound Waste Management District members, of which I am one, related to establishing recycling fees for 2019, as well as HHW, or Household Hazardous Waste Fees for 2019. Two points, I think, just to bring the council's attention, is we did approve a contract with the only vendor who submitted, and, but still, we have to set the recycling fees. And then, relative to HHW fee, there is some conversation about utilizing the Sound Waste Management District's cash reserves to actually fund the HHW fee. So, just heads up, alert on those two issues. But we have invited Randy Chibish to actually present to the joint committees, and since it's a matter that affects all districts, anyone who is not on either of those committees, if you might want to forget your calendar, that may be of interest.
Is it work day on Saturday?
January 9th, and of course, there'll be a formal notice sent out on that. And then, second, heads up as well, please, the Health and Public Safety Committee, at least, and there are other committees who are looking at this as well, but we will be looking at getting information and education relative to carbon reductions. And we are looking at holding two informational meetings back-to-back in February. So, the first week of February, two meetings, an hour and a half in length, in that same week, and that'll be an opportunity to learn about the science, but as well as historically kind of what has happened in the whole climate change field, and then an opportunity to look at what we are doing specifically within the city of South Bend, and what we may invite and challenge our community and our citizens to do going forward. So, we will have quite a few guest speakers teeing that up for us in February with the hopes of passing something during the month of April commemorating Earth Day or Earth Month.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Anything else on this side? Jake Teshka?
So, I've got a meeting with residents of the Scottsdale area, if anybody's out there, this coming Thursday, the 13th, at 6:00 PM, in the Esther Singer Meeting Room at the Fairgrounds to discuss plans for the old Scottsdale Pool site. So, if you have friends in that area, anybody who lives there, please spread the word. And then, also, I'd like to just get it on our radar. Many of you know, we've circulated some emails or written articles about the Oxford House situation that is unfolding on the southeast side in the 5th District. And it is essentially a sober living home that wants to come and locate on South Brooklyn Ham Drive. There are some things I've asked our attorney, Bob Palmer, to look into regarding zoning issues surrounding this. It is my understanding from conversations with representatives from Oxford House that they do intend on expanding in the city up to eight homes, and so I think it's something that needs to be on all of our radars as we dig in together so that we can better answer our residents' concerns. So, this is something that popped up late last, actually, mid-last week, and has continued, and so we're still digging in, and thank you, Bob, for your help on that. But I think maybe, and I did ask the, so this would be to Regina, who chairs our Community Relations Committee. I asked the regional manager from Oxford House if they would be willing to come and speak before us as like an update to that committee, so maybe we can schedule that for January and kind of get some talks on the books with them.
Okay. One last one. Thank you. Vice President Davis?
Got a message from Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. They will be at the Run Village Neighborhood on landing there at 6 o'clock PM sharp this coming Wednesday. The meetings are held at the Oliver Apartments. They should be coming in mid-air around that time. They will be there in town for about an hour, and then they have to head back to the Pole. So, do you want to come and see Santa Claus at Run Village Neighborhood meeting, please? Come at 6 o'clock PM, Run Village Neighborhood's Association meeting. You on the list?
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you. We will move on to Privilege and Floor. Privilege and Floor is where individuals can address the council, must state their name and address. Individuals are limited three minutes. Maximum time portion of this meeting is 30 minutes. Individuals may address only issues which are within the city jurisdiction. Individuals do not be permitted to talk on any topics that were councilheard on the agenda tonight. And myself, as president, can assign topics to individuals from Privilege's Floor to council members or work with the city clerk of administration on anything. With that, a veteran of Privilege and the Floor is after the podium. Please state your name and address and go.
Hi, I'm Sue Castle, 402 Kennedy Drive, one of the budget enthusiasts, and I thought I'd wrap up with a few comments. Little background, the circuit breaker that's coming up. The rest of Indiana had the circuit breaker go into effect in 2008. We got an extension to 2020, just San Jo County and Lake County, because there was way too much debt. So, this mayor and this council, you were charged with lowering debt because of the circuit breaker coming up. We were given an extension that the rest of Indiana didn't get. We're currently, as of today, 290 million, 495,504 dollars in debt, which amounts to 2,871 dollars per person in South Bend. According to state law, we can't exceed 2% of the net assessed value. The net assessed value is 2,405,000, I'm sorry, 2,405 million, 428,521 dollars. In terms of TIP, it's 741 million, 206,130 dollars. Now, one of the things you need to keep in mind is when you vote for a deficit budget, the state doesn't look very kindly on it. They have a code IC 6-1.1-18-10, which basically says that if you represent the deficit budget, you are found in malfeasance, which I found kind of interesting. The TIP for South Bend, there's a 35, 35% of South Bend is in TIP. Mishawaka has 39%. It's recommended that only 10% be in TIP. This creates a downward pressure in terms of other funding. So far, there's been 100 million dollars in abatements with this administration. And I'd like to remind everyone that as you go into 2019, the core business of the city is waters, sewers, streets, and public safety. It's not to create a Potemkin village. So, when you start with your priorities first thing, I'd like to see that you're funding those sewers that we want funded, the water that we want funded, and those streets that didn't get done this year. I'd like to see those at the top of the list.
You have 30 seconds.
I sent all of you an email with 20 suggestive ways to improve the budget process. I hope that you will consider those 20 things. Hopefully, you found some of them useful. And I think it would be great for not just homeless, but for South Bend, Mishawaka, and the county to all get together and talk about the whole county debt, because that's what the state's looking at. There's 15 counties that are having debt issues, and unfortunately, ours is one of them. Thank you. Have a great holiday, everyone.
Thank you. You, too. Next name and address.
Heidi, Nate Levin, Ashburn, 330.
This might fall.
You all right?
Yeah.
What's over there?
There's a table.
Oh, really? It's the county, so if you're looking to, any issue is the county.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry, would you please state your name and address, start all over again?
Nate Levin, Ashburn, 330. That doesn't count as my time, right?
Nope.
West Polfax Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. I have a community update for the council tonight. The Upper Room Recovery Community, an organization that has run a men's sober living facility not three blocks from here, 333 North Main Street for many years, has recently opened its public portion of a capital campaign to expand its program to women's services with a new building that will, when it's complete, be a 16-bed sober living facility that's open to women who are in recovery from addiction to drugs and alcohol. We had a groundbreaking just about a week and a half ago. Councilwoman Joe Groome was there, gave me the great idea to come here and tell you all about it. So, you know that sober living is one of the most important elements of addiction recovery as we figure out as a community how to tackle the opioid epidemic and the problems of how to deal with these public health crisis. It can't be understated how important it is to have that end step, which is an environment that is supportive and conducive to your recovery. It's one of the oldest truisms in recovery that to make it stick, you have to change your people, your places, and your playthings. And all of those things are part of sober supportive housing. So, I'll be around after this meeting if you'd like to talk more about it with me. You can find out more about the campaign to open this building, which is about a third way to its goal, at upperroomrecovery.org/women's. And I'm available, if you'd like, in the additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Appreciate it. Next name and address.
Jason Bedicki-Kritzlo, 3822 Ford Street. So, as you guys know, I like to read. One of the things I've been reading a lot about lately is a problem I would say we have here in South Bend. Spent a couple million dollars on Lincoln Way a few years ago to repave it, restripe it, you know, attract new business. And what were the very first two businesses we got? A Family Dollar five blocks from another one, and a Dollar General five blocks the other direction from the original Family Dollar. We're not the only community dealing with this epidemic. We're at about $20,000 stores combined between the two big dollar store operators nationally. Their plans within the next decade is to expand another 10,000, roughly to about 30,000 total. You know, the problems you run into when you see dollar stores is that they kind of have this continuing effect of feeding the cycle of poverty, because it allows those people, those neighborhoods, usually their only access to what equates to kind of a grocery store, because they tend to feed on food deserts, even though they have no fresh produce, no meat, no poultry, anything of that nature. Yet typically, the prices are higher per unit, so now you've got people feeling like, "Hey, I can go grab some groceries," but they're actually spending more money than they would if they had access to a fresh grocery. Many communities are faced with this. One of the ways that a few communities have tackled this, and one way I would propose that we do before we start to see even more, is through something called a formula business ordinance. What it basically does is allow you to pick areas of the city or the entire city where you say, "Okay, you can no longer operate formula businesses." What that means is a chain business of any sort, unless you go through and get approved for zoning by meeting certain criterias that say you already benefit to our city or this area of the city where we've decided that we want to promote good, solid economic investment, and also that we want to support our local entrepreneurs. So, that would be my challenge to you guys going into the new year, is to look at something along that lines of that formula business ordinance, prevent us from having even more dollar stores come over the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, Nate. Everybody have a good holiday.
Good night, Miss. Wherever you are.
[inaudible].